Okay, I see by my clock that it's three o'clock. A call to order the board of directors regular meeting study session for Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. General call please.
Director Griffith.
President.
Director Grasha.
President.
Director Sewell.
Yeah.
Vice President Wright. President Martin.
Here.
Thank you. We have Quorum.
And we'll go with the rules of procedure on Monday. Okay, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Martin, there are no members who wish to make public comment.
Okay. Item six, human resources report. We have a number of anniversaries and a new hire.
And one twenty-five year.
One for twenty-five Danny friend, twenty-five years. He doesn't look old enough to be here twenty-five years. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, we'll go over that more in detail on Monday. Unless somebody wants to address it today. Wow, that's so on Monday, okay.
It's mean I have, I have to get her evaluation done here.
Item seven, resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-six. Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District proclaiming a local emergency persists, reratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by executive order and is a Nora dash zero nine dash twenty-one and reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies for the Mission Springs Water District for the period October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two to November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two pursuant to the provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act. That's pretty self-explanatory. If you have any questions, we can bring them up or address your questions on Monday. Item eight, approved change order number four for the well twenty-four electrical panel rehabilitation project. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to negotiate and execute change order number four with R I C Construction Company, Inc. In the not to exceed amount of six thousand, seven dollars for additional work required to complete the well twenty-four electrical panel rehabilitation project and allocate an additional seventy-five hundred dollars for contingencies. General Manager Wallen.
Thank you, President Martin. Eric will give you some of the details. And I always apologize when I bring something like this to you. That's a very small amount, but we watch every penny. And our turtle makes there we account for everything that's, that's, that goes into this. So we want it, we needed to bring this back to get this action from you. Eric, you want to take it from there?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, General Manager Wallen, President Martin and members of the board. Item number eight of your agenda packet pertains to the approval of change order number four for the well twenty-four electrical panel rehabilitation project. The contractor, R I C Construction Company. Uh, that's the contractor and they've been working on the project since early September. During that time, the contractors made progress, significant progress with completing the necessary improvements to the electrical components and the panel. And that seeks to avoid damage to the motor and the pump of the well. Uh, work involved the removal and replacement of the electrical panel and components and upgrade them to current electrical code and district standards. This agenda item pertains, pertains to jet to change order number four and includes uh, Southern California Edison required site improvements. Um, contracted work should be substantially complete by the contractor tomorrow. That's close to business tomorrow afternoon. Uh, pending passing is Southern California Edison inspection. Uh, should be ready for energizing and we should be closer to starting up the well. Uh, the total cost for this change order is six thousand and seven dollars. And staff is requesting an additional seventy-five hundred dollars for contingencies to deal with uh, an anticipated Southern California Edison requirements. Uh, I don't anticipate any, but uh, and if we don't need it, we won't spend it. So otherwise, staff is available to answer any questions as necessary.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Director Grasha?
Uh, just to clarify, is this part of the new well that hasn't been put into service or is this another well that had a problem? In addition to that, we, we had a agenda item not long ago for something similar. I just wondered if this is the same panel or how many of these do you have in the mix right now?
I think this is, this one's been under construction since September. Uh, I don't think it's related to another well that you might.
No, this is not a new well.
Well, it's the same one. I mean, it's, it's a, it's been there and it's not associated with any other.
All right.
Item.
So then the new well that was dug, uh, what's the status of that, General Manager? We spent four and a half million dollars to drill a well. It was never put into service. I just wondered what's going on.
Director Grasha, Brian Macy, uh, well, forty-two is the, is the well you're making reference to. It's at the similar site as well twenty-four as well as well as twenty-two. Uh, forty-two, when we did the original pump test during the design phase, it came up with a approximate two thousand gallons a minute. When we actually drilled well and did a pump test, it was closer to twenty-seven hundred gallons per minute. So we evaluated the pump itself based on what we could pull out of there and the available capacity. And we went through that process of looking at the pump motors and things of that nature. The pump, we tried to increase the efficiency, which required us to change the design and then hence working with uh, S E to modify that design as well. So that well has been dug, but we're still waiting on the pump to actually be delivered. So then we can move forward with that. So yes, that has been dug and there has been a very little activity on that for the last several months as we wait for the new motor and pump to get delivered. But it is still under construction and not been active. We hope to get that done depending on supply chain issues that we're having in the next six months and be ready for next spring.
So that is the panel on that. I know that was the one I was conflicting with this one. That panel is complete and ready to go into service, uh, separate from this, or is the panel for that one?
And that, that's part of what they're working on. It's the, the, when we redesigned the motor to, and pump to make it more efficient and that changed some of the motor control issues and we're still waiting on that. So you're absolutely right, Director. We're waiting on the Motor Control Center for this as well as the regional plant and some other projects we're also trying to rehabilitate. But well, twenty-four, the issue in front of you today for this item is onsite and getting ready to be energized once it gets S E approval.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, anything further, Director Griffiths? Director Sewell? Vice President Wright? Okay, moving on to item nine, award of contract for the construction of the regional sewer conveyance line project. It is recommended authorized general manager to award a contract for the construction of the regional sewer conveyance line project to Downing Construction Incorporated. The lowest responsible bidder in the amount of six million, five hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars plus a ten percent contingency of six hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ten cents for a total of seven million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and ten cents and to do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager Wallen.
All right, I'm gonna let um, Brian and Steve give you some of the details, but just to give you some background, we've had this in front of you. There are three parts to the regional plant. This is one part that we um, have gone out to bid for and they can give you the details. You want to take it from there, Brian?
Actually, I think Eric's prepared to give this presentation.
Eric, sorry.
Sorry.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good afternoon, General Manager Wallen, President Martin and members of the board. Item nine pertains to the award of the contract for the construction of the regional sewer conveyance line project. The conveyance line project is a integral part of the overall wastewater treatment program, which includes the construction of the regional wastewater reclamation facility and the implementation of the M two septic to sewer project. The scope of work for the conveyance line project involves the construction of two miles of sewer force main along Dillon Road from Dos Palmas Lift Station to Little Morongo Road as well as the construction of one point three miles of gravity sewer line along Little Morongo Road to the new regional wastewater reclamation facility. Staff has received four bids and they were analyzed and the bids were tabulated and are detailed in the attached bid review summary memorandum. After reviewing all the bids, Downing Construction was found to be the lowest responsible bidder at six million, five hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. This bid amount was approximately eighteen percent higher than the engineer's estimate. This can be attributed to price increases of PVC and VCP pipeline bid items. Labor availabilities, global shortages of raw materials and higher transportation costs have resulted in higher than expected costs for pipe materials. This pricing, this price volatility reflects an increase by forty percent for PVC pipe and twenty-five to thirty-five percent higher costs for VCP pipe. The costs for this part project are paid for by the R W R F grant in the amount of sixty-eight million dollars through the State Water Resources Control Board. Although the conveyance line project bid amount was above the engineer's estimate, the project is within the approved grant amount. And there is no fiscal impact to the district. Staff is available to answer any questions as necessary.
Okay, um, Director Sewell, do you have any questions or comments?
Just one regarding the conveyance line itself. Um, will that tear up the existing roadway or will this be adjacent to Dillon Road?
It'll be in the roadway and staff uh, will, has already started discussions with the city. And staff is gonna be in lockstep with them to go over and make sure traffic control situations are taken care of. Uh, that the traveling public is, is accommodated and inconveniences are reduced.
Okay, great. That's what I was getting talks about. Thank you.
Director Grasha, any questions or comments?
A couple of questions. The uh, force main is gonna involve a pump system. Where's that pump system gonna be? Is that gonna be at the lift station?
Yes.
Okay, and uh, you said that this came in higher eighteen percent and the budget, but the budget amount was eight million. Is that hu- uh, higher in terms of the uh, it, it, what, there's a difference there. Is that because of the engineering costs are not included, of course, in the construction? Is that why we're seeing the difference? Do you know what I'm saying? Well, we originally budgeted eight million dollars to build this and, and it came in at six and a half fish million. And you're saying it came in above what we budgeted. I just wondered what portion of, of that difference went to what? You know?
Design costs are not included. This is, this is specifically construction. And, and this uh, the engineer's estimate was less than the six and a half million dollars by eighteen percent.
Okay. But we budgeted over eight million for this and I just wondered what, what, why we're, why we're saying it's over eighteen percent over our budget.
It's, it was eighteen percent over the engineer's estimate, which was less.
So it's, so it's still within our original budgeted amount. I'm just, I'm just, I guess I'm surprised that it's came in below the eight. So there's something missing from the calculation and I just want to know what that is.
Eric, let me take this. Director Grasha, you're correct. The budget number that you see is total project cost, which would include engineering, construction, maintenance and things of that nature. The item we're bringing to you and what Eric is making rest, reference to is the engineer's estimate. And then, of course, the construction cost, the bid cost. So you're absolutely correct. The, the line item that you see in the budget being the eight million dollars does include other costs, including construction.
But we're not naming what those other costs are.
Well, the engineering has already been completed. And now that we have this con, now that we have this particular piece in place, we'll do internal to, because TK is also going to do the inspection of this as well as part of the regional plant, the whole total project. So that was included in the original C N M. So from a budget perspective, a part of this eight and a half million dollars would go to that construction and maintenance or construction and management effort. So you're just seeing a certain, you're seeing, you're seeing one, you're seeing a, you're seeing a piece of that eight million dollars. A piece of it was T K E for engineering and then the larger uh, construction and management piece.
Okay, there was talk uh, when this was coming to a final uh, design that there was gonna be a line placed between the uh, Horton Plant and the lift station. Uh, I wondered if this is, that's part of this.
Did you? Eric shaking his head and yes, yes, Director, there is a connection. Uh, one of the line items in the bid tab talks about a flow diversion and that flow diversion is taking place just outside the Horton Plant to actually use the existing force main. So Dos Palmas currently pumps north to the Horton Plant. Because the elevation is so, it's, it's increased so much going uphill. All we have to do is put a flow diversion chamber there to actually allow it to flow back downhill. It goes right into the lift station and then gets pumped up to go uphill down closer to Dillon Road where, excuse me, down Dillon Road where then it gets over the hill, if you will, then goes into Little Morongo and flows in the conveyance line going south. So you're absolutely correct. This project does include the connection between Horton and the regional plant.
It might be confusing is that the, the, you know, the Dos Palmas Lift Station is already in place and we use that to collect the the, the sewage from uh, one of the areas that we did a septic to sewer and we, and we pumped it with the force main to Horton. Now we're gonna reverse that flow.
But still get the benefit of that, that pipe being in place.
And still get the benefit of the Dos Palmas Lift Station, which was all part of the plan to begin with.
So where I wanted to know is, uh, what is the capacity of that uh, connection? Is it, 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 is it enough to carry today's uh, flow from i- i- into Horton? Or, or is, and, and is, is the force made enough to carry the Horton flow? Should that Horton, someday some board decides to shut Horton down? Are we putting enough, big enough system in the ground to maybe do that? I, and I don't even know if that's a something that is even to be considered, but it seems like where we're doing this and we're making all these connections, will that candle two and a half million gallons a day?
Yes, it, it will not, it will not convey two and a half million without some substantial changes to that existing lift station. It was not designed to carry the full two and a half million. It was designed to do one and a half and using the existing pumps and doing some slight modifications, we may be able to increase that closer to two million gallons, which is what Horton sees today. But the entire design capacity of the system and everything at Horton coming down Verbena, it will not be able to support that with what's in the ground now. We're just we're basically splitting the flow to allow us to do, to allow the maintenance and things that are necessary to keep some of the trains that had not been maintained at Horton, just because we can't take them offline. So it allows us the flexibility. It will get very close to the entire flow, but not to a hundred percent of the flow, but it will allow us to take at least one, if not two trains offline at the same time. And allow us that flexibility. If something does happen at the regional plant, we can always switch the piping back and pump it back in the Horton as well.
Well, that's good news. I, it would have been nice to be able to move the entire flow at some point, you know?
But, but the other thing that I should add to what Brian is saying is that much of the new flows that you're gonna see are really gonna not be, are not gonna come through Horton. They're gonna go south on Little Morongo. And so we won't even need that, that flow at that point.
That's a very good point. When we bring all the flow down Little Morongo from let's, future Mission Spr- or Mission Lakes Country Club and other things coming down too bunch, you're absolutely right, Director, excuse me, uh, General Manager Wallen. We will not necessarily be pumping it up and around to go to Horton. We'll just be taking it straight south along Little Morongo Road.
Well, someday at some point, I'm sure that some board is gonna weigh the possibility of closing Horton and transferring everything down there. And I just hope we can, while we're doing this.
Right now, I'm gonna, I wanna get some input from the other board members and I'll come back to you, Steve. If you have any additional questions after, after they get done. Okay, uh, Robert, do you have any questions or comments? I don't. Ivan? Uh, Vice President Wright? Okay, I don't have anything. Do you have any other questions, uh, Mr. Grasha?
Well, I, I just was trying to make the point uh, when I was interrupted that the uh, value of that land that the Horton sits on is, uh, it seems to be growing exponentially in my view. And uh, at some point in the future, some board is gonna want to look back and say, you know, we did the right thing and, and and did I interrupt something, Nancy?
I didn't do anything. I didn't say anything.
Okay, I saw you, I saw your head moving and I heard laughing. I thought maybe you were laughing. So that's it, uh, Mr. President. Thank you for the time. I hope I didn't interrupt your lunch there.
Uh, Director Sewell?
And I would just want to clarify too, that once the new um, plant gets up and running, it couldn't even handle the full flow from Horton because it's one point five million. So in the future, hopefully we can expand that plant.
That is correct. We're just building what we can afford to build right now.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public? None. Uh, moving on to item ten, rejection of construction bids for the drywall repairs at the Mission Springs Water District Administration Building. It is staff's recommendation to reject all bids and not proceed with the drywall repairs at the Mission Springs Water District Administration Building. All right. Mr. Wallen, go ahead.
Thank you, President Martin. Um, well, first of all, I should start. That's not in my notes is that we will do, go either way that you prefer and we're ready to go either way with this decision, but uh, this is a rather unusual recommendation. But as you know, the building here is displaying some of its uh, maturity. Um, we did nearly four years ago have a rain event that was severe and there weren't enough buckets in the city for us at that point and we did replace the roof. Um, and that resulted um, in, you know, much of the building uh, also being affected because that water did um, destroy some of the drywall in the building, okay? Um, we were directed by you to solicit bids and that's what we did for this drywall repair. We have uh, we have done that. Two bids did come in. The lowest bid responsible bidder was Quality Plus Group uh, for seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, but concurrently, we have been working towards the development of the Critical Service Center, which uh, will be on a report later by Steve, okay? Uh, once this is completed, we will either sell or lease this property, whatever your preference is. Uh, and this building has been temporarily um, fixed. Uh, the staff and I went over this and we thought we would recommend to you that we can live with this until we complete the new service center. Um, it's not very attractive, but it's functional. And we're moving people around and we're so excited about your decision to move forward, which is the, the correct decision. Um, there are several advantages to delaying this. I mean, and Nancy said, hey, we're gonna have to fix this place up anyway if we decide to lease it, most likely. So we may do some of this repair and then tear it out. So um, you know, and, and we can function until the service center is ready. Um, the lease uh, for the new tenant will or may, and, and they may want some specific adjustments to it. Uh, so let's wait until we see what they want before we spend the money and um, and we, at that time may remove or repair what we, what we fixed. So we, we would, we recommend that we just wait until there are very specific plans for the future use of this building.
For all we know, you might want to tear it down.
Exactly. Or you might want to sell the property. So uh, um, we're, 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 we just think that it would save the rate pairs money if we, if we recommend it not moving forward right now.
Okay, Director Griffith, any comments?
Uh, just a question. So I have not walked through the whole building. I did see one area back here. Uh, is any of this in a public facing area for the day when we were reopened to the public here?
Not really, no. That's a good question. No, um, it did not affect the lobby area.
Okay, thank you. I want to apologize to Director Griffith because I think I skipped you on the comments on the previous item. So I'm gonna give you extra time on Monday. It's fine. Yeah. Vice President Wright, any questions?
No, I, I don't know how much drywall you're looking at, but seventy-four thousand sounds like an awful.
That's a lot of money.
Lot of money, lot for that uh, years ago or even before COVID, before the supply chain thing, it wouldn't have probably been that much.
Okay, anything else? Director Sewell?
I just want to make sure that all of it is aesthetic. None of it is a safety issue or anything.
Oh, no, that's one thing. That was one part of our decision process and, and investigation was. In fact, we think it's, we've caught a lot of problems that we think we wouldn't have recognized if this hadn't happened and we've, we've had the building inspected. More than that. More than twice. So we're fear, very comfortable that this is not a, a health hazard. Very good question.
You can always tell the public that this is a shabby chic design element pursuing the water district.
His office is shabby chic.
We just want it to be functional. We've, I've been living in this building since I was here eighteen years ago and I love it, but you know, it's just, it's in, I, I don't mind just staying here until we see.
Yeah, it, it's time. It's time for you guys to have a building that works for a water district.
It's designed.
It's designed or works for, yes, I, I'm, I'm excited too about it.
Director Grasha?
I, I don't, uh,
Okay, any members of the public?
I, I hadn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you didn't have anything.
I know how you like to just speed through there like it doesn't. But I, I was gonna finish by saying I have no comments on this subject, but I've stated over time that I thought that this should have been moved along and, and uh, this actually comes in lower than the original estimate was well over a hundred thousand dollars. So uh, if you weren't moving ahead with this uh, fiasco of a building that's gonna uh, put a chain around the necks of our rate pairs for decades to come. Uh, you could sit in this building for a little bit of time and in a couple of months, the people of Desert Hot Springs would be acquiring a very nice facility and forty, over forty thousand new rate payers. But because of the uh, dynamics of this board who only concern themselves with their own political agenda and not the real uh, agenda of the public that we serve. You're going to build a new building that is going to uh, be a difficult.
Director Grasha, you're making a personal attack at this time and I want you to refrain from that or I'll have to cut you off, okay? So moving on to item eleven, professional services agreement amendment with West Coast for Horton wastewater treatment plant technical reports, Director Wallen, or excuse me, General Manager Wallen.
Okay, I'm gonna let Brian uh, explain this issue with you and uh, there, this has some history and it's connected uh, to a project that's ongoing that you, that has been in front of you. Okay, Brian?
Uh, thank you, General Manager. Thank you, uh, President Wright, members of the board. Oh, I'm sorry, President Martin, I'm sorry. I didn't, thank you. Um, Mission Springs Water District entered into a professional service agreement with West Yo's on March first, two thousand and twenty-two uh, to complete a T D S or total dissolved solid impact evaluation work plan for the regional water reclamation facility, leveraging the work completed as part of the Coachella Valley Salt and Nutrient Management Plan. The work plan and technical report to be completed under this amendment is similar in nature to the West Yo's previous efforts completed for the Coachella Valley Salt and Nutrient Management Plan and earlier for M S W D. If approved, West Yo's scope of services will include working with the Colorado River Regional Board staff in preparing a total dissolved solids impact evaluation work plan and nitrogen control strategy technical report for the Horton wastewater treatment plant as required by the recently adopted waste discharge requirements. Again, this is something that is required and uh, we need to do that to be compliant with the regional board's wishes. So with that, I would answer any questions.
Okay. Um, Vice President Wright?
Just for clarification, this has nothing to do with the N O V.
It is not part of the N O V. This is part of the new discharge requirements, completely separate from the N O V.
Uh, Director Griffith?
So I see we have in here, it's a So I see we have in here, it's it's an amendment. I I don't know what the original one was, but it's a technical report include will include a work plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so do, just to get an I, I can wrap my head around this. They made these rules or adopted new waste discharge requirements. What is the deadline for those to be, the process to be completed and and reach those limits?
So the reports are due by next April.
Okay.
And based on those findings, then we'll have a timeline of when we have to meet additional requirements as far as our discharge. And that's really what it's setting the stage for. The salt nutrient management plan limits, if you will, are going to be established for the entire Coachella Valley. So to make us meet something that would be more or less stringent was not in the best interest of anyone. So that's why we're going through this process and why we actually hired this company is because they are working on the bigger plan for the valley. They've worked with us on the regional plant. That was the first professional service agreement and why this is an amendment. So they've already done the regional. So now they're just going to our second plant and doing the same thing there.
Okay, and but in terms of when these limits go into effect, it's the Colorado River Basin Regional Water Quality Control Board, have they set a deadline for this or is it once all this is done, then they'll say, okay, this is the when it's gonna be?
When we were negotiating our new permit, they wanted to have specific limits and one of our comments and requests back to them were let's do some of these other necessary reports that's required before we actually set limits that we have to meet. We know they're going to be more stringent and we'll have to plan for those, but let's make sure we set them at the right levels and consistent to what they are throughout the Coachella Valley.
And that's, and that's why we want to complete the basin plan, which is what West Coast is also working on. So it makes sense that they would help us. Not only that, but we don't know, you know, I can, I pretty much can say outright that every plant, every water reclamation plan in this valley are going to have these two limits.
Right, but but as of this time, there has been no deadline set for when those are done. Okay, that's kind of what I'm just thinking.
The permit itself lasts anywhere from five to ten years, depending on how quickly the board comes back and evaluates those limits. So yes, if we do set this limit, it will probably be with us for the next five to ten years. So it's very important that we get this number right because if it goes too low, let's say nitrogen, for example, now we're gonna have to start changing some of our processes to remove the nitrogen because we do not have a nitrogen requirement right now. So.
May not be needed.
Okay, thank you.
Director Sewell. Director Grusha.
Does this, will these new numbers be in line with the numbers out at the new plant or are they gonna, are they suspect to be different?
We expect them to be consistent with the new plan, very similar technologies of both. The the plant treatment will be different, but we expect the discharge to be very similar.
And and what are the, what's the difference between those numbers and the numbers that we're operating under right now? Is it? Is it? How much expense is going to be involved in meeting those numbers from facilities upgrades and whatnot that might be needed beyond the cost of the report?
Based on the numbers we have right now and the the primary number that was talked about and with the permit and with the regional board was how much total dissolved solid con or concentration over what we take out of the ground? And I believe that was around one sixty-five is what we decided on. And that's, that's the number we're at right now. We can meet those with our existing technologies. However, the nitrogen is the one that's the most concerning because that's gonna have to change some of our processes with the intrusion of oxygen and things like that to break down that nitrogen. So right now our plant is okay. And until those limits are set and when those limits are going to have to be met is when we'll start putting dollar amounts to them.
So in line with my comments earlier, we're gonna have to upgrade this plant to meet the what we've already agreed to at the new plant and if I I just wonder if there's a potentially a savings closer in than than what we're you know, Director Sewell made the point that, well, that plant doesn't have the capacity, but that plant has the capacity to grow exponentially and I believe enough to satisfy the needs of the district wide for a long time, longer than any one of us will be alive. And I just wonder at some point, when does it become mathematically a good idea to maybe look at the possibility of as making, you know, to start, you know, moving toward that goal faster than 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 later.
Yeah, Director, you're making a lot of good points and this study will tell us what the discharge requirements are. Once we know what those are, then it's we'll have to evaluate what the upgrade or if any upgrades are necessary. And then do we want to invest in this location versus the regional plan? The regional plant, we have plenty of property down there. I believe we can go up over twenty million gallons a day, which is to complete build out of our service area. So yes, we will want to, we do master plans. We're in the process of completing a master plan for our sewer side. That will be part of this evaluation of where are we going to use our resources. It has been substantial a lot of time since the last time we looked at our master plan. I think two thousand six was the last time we have done one. You try to do those every five to ten years. So we will continue to evaluate where to spend our dollars best. Once some of these studies get completed and then evaluating the best treatment technology at the time.
Well, it just feels like you're moving on fast enough that 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 day might become come you know, sooner that rather than later. And and it's good that all of these things are being considered now and hopefully someday soon you can look at the opportunity of moving the entire system to the new facility and you know, that way you don't have to run two crews and you don't have to have people coming back and forth. And if it's just a simple upgrade to the lift station, then and that's something that maybe you guys take a look at. I'll be gone, but I'll be watching. Thank you.
Okay, is there any members of the public wish to weigh in on this? Anything further from the board? Okay, with that, move on to item twelve, Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update. Pardon?
Steve, Mr. Steve Ledbetter will present to you the progress we have made and it looks very impressive out there and I think you're gonna be you're gonna be, you're really gonna enjoy the the tour of the plant.
All right. Thank you, General Manager Wallam. Good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. Bear with me while I share my screen real quick. Okay, so before I get into this slideshow, I do have a couple of updates regarding the grant. The district did receive the final funding agreement that's been fully executed by the state. So we have that in hand. Everything's been approved. The second step that's in process now is what's called the final budget approval. And for each phase of the project, we submit paperwork that says this is what the bid amount was for the regional plant. This is how much we want to spend of the sixty-eight million you've approved. Are we authorized to do so? The regional board is reviewing that now. All that paperwork's been done. It was completed well before we even finished the grant execution. So now the state's reviewing that and as soon as we have their approval, we'll be working with the Director of Finance, Arturo and his team to prepare the reimbursement, the first reimbursement for the project. Regarding the regional sewer conveyance line, that was already discussed as part of the previous board agenda items. That project has been bid and we're looking forward to that being awarded potentially on Monday and moving into construction. And lastly, the area M two sewer, we're continuing to coordinate with Riverside County on pavement rehabilitation options and seeing if there's any partnership opportunities to share costs within that area. The county has noted that they have a payment rehab project on Bubbling Wells Road from Dillon North and then they're potentially considering a slurry project in the neighborhoods around that area within M two. So we're coordinating with them now to see if there's an opportunity to share costs for pavement rehabilitation and save the district some funding in that regard. And with that, I'll get into a quick slideshow about the regional plant progress. So the contractor, J F Shea, has continued to make progress on the north half of all the sequence batch reactor tanks. And what you see in front of you is the slab on grade for the north half of the tanks. They originally started with the south half of the tanks and are working on the south half walls now that the the slabs have been completed. And there, as you see in front of you, the north half of the slabs are being formed. All the rebar embedment is being placed and all the conduits and piping within the concrete slab are being placed. This picture highlights some of the SBR wall reinforcements going in. It's a pretty substantial rebar network grid that you see in front of you that the crews are working on to support the concrete structures, these large concrete tanks and make sure that they withstand any any earthquakes or any other things that may come their way. This, this is standing now down on the SBR tank floor. We're looking south at the completed south half SBR slab. One of the walls on the left-hand side of the screen has already been formed forward and those forms have been stripped. And you see on the right-hand side of the screen, the walls being either formed kind of in the background and in the foreground, you see all the rebar and embedment being placed. This is kind of a general overview on where things were at as far as October twelfth. You can see that on the left-hand side, a lot of the south walls have been formed and poured and stripped. And they're working on kind of the right-hand side of the screen, getting the rest of those SBR tank walls formed and poured. And in the foreground, as we mentioned, is the SBR slabs on the north half that are being formed in the embedments and conduits ran. I mentioned the the mega sweep last week. This is one of two or excuse me, one of three large conduit structures that take about a hundred plus conduits down below ground and into the slab of the SBR tanks. And this is one of those stub outs that's been formed. It's been poured. You can see kind of that red cement, that red slurry mixture. It's it's all encased in to make sure that none of those PVC conduits are damaged by any kind of future construction or whatnot. And then that red dye in the concrete lets any future excavate excavator know if they happen to hit it. When they see that red concrete, they know it's an electrical duct bank and it needs to proceed with extreme caution. The operations building, they've been at it for several months, putting in all the conduits and plumbing for the building. So kind of the larger picture here, these are a lot of the electrical conduits, how they make their way up into the electrical room and the blower room within the operations building and the and the other photo shows some of the plumbing for the building being placed. This will be for sinks, washrooms, maintenance, wash down area for equipment, so on and so forth. And then the last photo for today is the operations building footing. You can see some of the plumbing being put in in the background and they're working on the footings for the actual slab for the operations building. The operations building slab, these footings are going to continue in progress through the rest of the month and they'll actually start pouring footings and working on the slab in November for the operations building. Right now, the operations building materials are scheduled to be delivered to the site in early November. So as we kind of work into next month and into December, you're really gonna start to see the big operations building start to take shape after months and months of work on all the undergrounding components. And with that, I do have a quick time lapse video I'd also like to share. Just, I think it's pretty, I think the board will appreciate seeing the progress that's been made over the last month and a half and you can really see these walls start to take shape on the facility. Oh, no. Okay, sorry, I'm gonna start that. So we're standing at the northwest corner of the SBR tanks looking southeast. And if you pay attention to kind of the backside of the screen, you'll start to see the south wall of the tanks and the SBR individual. There's gonna be four large tanks here. You'll start to see those take shape as we're moving across. This video roughly covers the beginning of September through yesterday. I mean, you'll kind of see the large crane moving around and you'll see the forming going up and coming back down. And really start to see, like I said, the progress of these four individual treatment tanks really starting to take shape. This has been, like I mentioned, about six weeks worth of work to work on these walls and start that pouring process. And you'll kind of see right now there's some cooling blankets hanging on a portion and some, you know, cooling pipes that we're still working with. We're hopeful that now that the temperatures have cooled, we won't need to continue running cooling pipes through the tanks. But that's really it. That kind of showed highlighted the progress over the last month and a half on the tank walls. With that, I'd like to answer any questions.
Director Sewell.
Yeah, just curious, not sure if you have this off the top of your head, but what's the capacity of each of those tanks?
Each of the tanks is three hundred thousand gallons. Right, no, sorry. There are fifty thousand, five hundred thousand gallon capacity for each tank. So three tanks make up the firm capacity of one point five million gallons. And the fourth tank is your redundant capacity that the regional board requires. So in total, there's a capacity of two million at any instantaneous point in time, but the regional board does not allow you. You have to have a redundant treatment train at all times. So that if something were to happen, you have another treatment train you can start up and take care of any wastewater and make sure that that does not spill into the environment. So each tank is five hundred thousand gallon capacity.
Great, thank you.
Director Griffith.
No questions.
Okay, Vice President Wright.
Yeah, what I did notice is there was no scaffolding. He did, these guys don't need scaffolding out there, do they? When they're working with that, they just cry, they walk right up to.
Yeah, they have a whole harness system and retention system and they just climb right up the side and and kind of clip on to the rebar with their harnesses and their fall protection.
Yeah, thanks. That was it. No, great job. Thanks. And thanks for that video.
Director Grusha.
You know, I'm interested in hearing your thoughts on why this rebar was chosen and not the epoxy coated rebar that is sometimes used to extend the service life of a facility like this. Is there been some findings that the epoxy coated rebar is not helping or or how how did, how did you arrive at the decision not to use the epoxy coated rebar? I wondered if that's something you could share with us.
Director Grusha, I'll be upfront, that's not my area of expertise, but in my limited experience that epoxy coated rebar is really only used in highly, highly corrosive environments. So if we were dealing with saltwater or had the potential for saltwater intrusion around that that concrete, that would be the issue. But from my, to my knowledge, a treatment plant like this does not typically use epoxy coated rebar. If you'd like, I could reach out to the design consultant and bet bet out a more appropriate answer, but that's to my knowledge what I have.
I I would, I this is, you know, I I just some experience with failing structures and and it all generally comes back to the rebar rusting inside the concrete causing expansion and and full collapse like that's what brought down the tower in Florida. Bridges across the country and I just, I thought that that was a fix for that and apparently it's not. So otherwise I think I would see it in here and I just surprised I didn't see it. It was something that they started using about the time I left the business and I thought that was the the end all of fix, the the one fix that was gonna stop collapses. So and apparently we're not using it here. It's just an interesting thing to notice. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything further from the board? Any comments from the public on this matter? Hearing none, we'll move on to the item thirteen, Critical Services Center and Administration Building Update.
You know, there's not much since we're at that stage where we, like we told you last time, you got the plans there and we're we're all looking at them and commenting. So I'll let Brian expand on that.
Thank you, General Manager, President Martin, members of the board. You're absolutely correct. At this point, we are still looking for comments from the staff and the board looking at and we've, and yes, we have had some and and looking in addition to what we talked about at the workshop back, I don't know how many months ago. But some of the things that we just wanted to share with you, still looking at the layout of the building itself. There were some questions about what would the lobby look like? So we did have a picture of what the lottie would look like, something like this is what they're. So, we did have a picture of what the lottie would look like, something like this is what they're looking at. Again, some of these colors can change. But this is just the renderings that they have at this time. Uh, some of the open air areas that you see, a place for a reception area. You see the lines that coming in for customer service on the left of this building. Then some of the, again, a lot of comments about the colors, not a lot of people like the green colors, but this would be the. Uh, kitchen area that we see in the back of the building, uh, place for people to take their break, also congregate. Warm up food, things of that nature. Looking through this area here, you can see that these, uh, walls can open up also to the left. That is a partition wall that can be pulled back into the permanent wall you see in white there, but yes, this room can not necessarily double in size. But increased by almost forty percent. Uh, looking through the building, you see a couple of walls back there to provide a little bit of sun protection. But also to block, you see the, uh, where we would have a canopy, if you will, for solar panels. Uh, and protecting some of our vehicles in the very far there. Bicycles, I don't know, but if somebody wants to ride their bicycle in the back, they can more than welcome to do that, but. Uh, that was something that some other people have commented on. I didn't know we were gonna be providing bicycles, but. Uh, some other renderings, uh, what the boardroom may look like. A lot of the things you see along the top there are more for sound purposes and things like that. Colored raperies and stuff like that just had it happen to accent some certain things. Uh, the configuration of this is set up for the boardroom. So you see the dais up there that's that semi curved. You also see on the left and the right of the dais, you'll see a table, uh, where people can sit staff and things of that nature. That is set up to be. Uh, temporary, if you will, or on rollers. And the reason we were asking for those to be rollers and what would that look like? We were looking at different configurations for the boardroom and I'd like to share those with you. Uh, this is the configurations that we're looking at, option one and two. Uh, option one, of course, would be our, the normal boardroom setting where we could get almost, uh, a hundred people in the room comfortably. The second option would be more of almost a training facility where we would have people come in for trainings and things of that nature. Uh, you see the, the, what I would call the rollaway tables on each side of the dais. Option three and four, take those away and, and actually open up the room to be a lot more useful, if you will, from a numbers perspective. You have almost eighty in round circles if we wanted to have any special events there. Uh, this would be more like from employee functions or. Uh, holiday parties and things like that. And then thirty-two seating would be more of a, an open area where we would invite people, maybe the city, Seabag, whoever. And have a larger area to have everybody at one location. So these are the, we were asking for what does the board look like once it's in operation? And these are some of the configurations they came up with. Again, I do, uh, ask the board to give us any feedback or anything of anything you've seen to date. There are still a set of plans. Up in Arden's office as well as now a set of plans in this room as well. Feel free to come through them and ask staff any questions at this time.
When is the, uh, deadline for submitting suggestions for the various options we have here?
We would like to see suggestions by the end of this month. Uh, there are still some things that we're working on as far as canopies and how to use that's. How to use solar panels the best to our ability and making sure that we're using, utilizing our backup power along with, we have a well behind this property. And behind this building, how do we use one generator, two generators or three generators? So we're still working on the plans. These are not final whatsoever. The end of this month, though, we've told, uh, Reynolds Clark that we'd like to get them all of our comments, all of our suggestions so they can finalize the plan. And possibly start building, uh, bidding the project sometime in early next year.
Okay. Uh, Director Griffith. Any questions or comments? Vice President Wright. Director Sewell.
Um, I reviewed the plans and I think they all look great and seeing Renews Clark's, um, East Valley Building and, uh. Palm Springs Unified Buildings, um, I'm fully confident and just, uh, excited to get this moving forward.
Director Grasha.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item fourteen. Approval of minutes is recommended to approve the minutes as follows. Minutes from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two study session and the minutes from September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two board meeting. Uh, review these minutes over the weekend. If you have any corrections or additions, we'll address those on Monday. Also, item fifteen, register of demands, register of demands totaling three million, one hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. You can review that over the weekend and again, if you have any comments, questions or changes. We'll address those on Monday. Item sixteen, directors' reports. Does anybody want to do theirs today? Okay. Monday, okay, we're all gonna do ours on Monday, moving right along. General manager's report included in the general manager's report, the following oral report, the public affairs update, but we'll start with the general manager's report.
Okay, actually, I'm going, I don't really have anything in addition to what you, uh, have in here. Uh, in the report itself, take a look at it and. And, uh. We did want to have a video for you today for the, and we don't, we, we're not gonna have again because of the audit of financial report. So that, uh, that will be postponed till next month or the month after and, um. And then we wanted to provide you with the video, but that will, that should be ready on Monday. So we'd like to postpone the, uh, the public affairs, uh, report update till then also.
Okay.
Okay.
Item eighteen, district council comments.
Uh, no report today.
And we're not going into closed session, correct?
That's correct. We are not.
Okay, with that, uh, anything more from the board? Okay, seeing none, uh, meeting is adjourned.